All right, 7:12, welcome into We Get It Wednesday. Carol Ross and Stafford Barnett here. Warren Cottle is on a self-imposed suspension. I don't know for what. I don't, I don't know what has happened. No, I'm just kidding.
I heard he's on an ayahuasca retreat.
Well, who knows where he is. Um, he'll be back next week, though. So, we are just grace with, uh, two lovelies.
Hi, lovelies.
Stafford Barnett and Carol Ross.
Good morning.
All right, so, um, has everyone calmed down from what happened on, uh, on Monday night with the legislature? Uh, you had a lot of interesting calls. You even had Moon on your show in the afternoon. Now, that's, that's almost like national security threat level if he's around.
Marcon Forum.
If he's, if he's around at that time and, and also cohesive enough to actually do your show.
It's always, it's, it's always, well, you know, you're taking a chance in the afternoon. When Moon is on in the afternoon, you take any chance.
All right, uh, so Carol, we'll start with you. Um, we are looking ahead to a third special session. I love how we keep hearing people say, "Let's talk about the likelihood." We're past the likelihood because there's no deal. They have to do something. Um, where do we end with this? Or where's, I guess where's the next step? We know where we need to go, but what's next?
And as usual, they confuse the budget with the taxes because they say, "Oh, we, you know, they failed to pass a budget." No, they passed a budget. Just don't know how they're gonna fund it.
How to pay for it, yeah.
That's, that's the only thing. Uh, actually, I'm rather happy that they pushed back, that finally the conservatives are pushing back because over and over and over again, they've been coerced and intimidated and otherwise, you know, scared into compromising with a, with a governor who really, he really doesn't understand the word compromise. He really does not. Uh, he wanted the full penny, right? So, got it back to the half penny. They wanted nothing. They came up to one-third. Somewhere, somebody needed to understand that when Lance Harris said, "If it comes back changed, it's not gonna pass," because they knew they would not have the votes in the House to pass that. Now, he says, "They're after me." Well, no, it's not all about you, Governor. They have constituents at home. And if you listen to my show in the afternoon, you know their constituents wanted them to hold the line on that one. They didn't like the one-third penny. It was supposed to be a temporary tax. Okay, so we knew, they held their noses, they voted for the one-third penny, hoping that that would at least bring the governor to the, you know, back to the table to negotiate. Not him. Even the Senate, which normally goes along with whatever the, the governor wants, they pushed back a little bit, too. There was a little bit of daylight between the governor and the Senate, which was, I thought, a good sign. Now, they're just gonna have to come back and unfortunately do this again. I've, I've seen several legislators say they're not, they're definitely not gonna take, you know, Stuart Bishop and Jean-Paul Cousin didn't take the per diem first couple of days of this special session because there was nothing for them to do, to go over until the bills come out of committee. There's nothing to even look at. So, they didn't take their per diem. They're in trouble right now. They were the two Republicans, they were only two votes needed to pass that earned income tax credit increase, and they did it. And so, they're getting, they're catching hell now, but I'm gonna have to dig more into that. I haven't had a chance to really dig more into that and how the federal law has affected the earned income tax credit in Louisiana, so.
So, Stafford, one of the things, whenever we were talking back and forth, we talked to a few people yesterday, um, where, let me get this straight, where the, the half cent actually ended up getting more votes than the third cent. And the reason was, and I had to ask, why is this? Because it seemed like the people who voted no for the half cent, it just flipped. They didn't want something lower. It was a yes or no vote at the end of the day. It wasn't for that specific one. So, the people who wanted the fif, that wanted the, the fifty, then they turned on it, they voted no for the thirty. So, so then you had, you know, so then you had two things that didn't pass.
And you can book that there were some confused people because that thing was flying back and forth.
I'm confused by it right now. I have no idea, right?
See, because it doesn't make sense. It makes you, it, you, whenever, my assumption was, the people who didn't want the, who didn't want the fifty cent, oh, well, then they're all gonna vote for the thirty. But then you had all the people who voted for the fifty who voted no.
Look, that's-
It's a weird setup.
So, I, I wanna, I wanna address a couple of things that were said, and then I wanna talk about where I think we need to go, right? So, first off, I wanna celebrate some of the wins that these guys got done, uh, while they were there. Uh, restoring voting rights for, um, for minor felons, I think that was phenomenal. I think getting, um, some of the, some of the ailments added to the medicinal marijuana laws were absolutely great things for Louisiana, and I'm glad that they got that work done because I know it was hard work. Um, the problem that we have right now is that the governor doesn't have to understand compromise. He's got line item veto power. And because of that, um, he's, he, he really does have too much power, as Jindal had too much power and as any person who's been there has had too much power. And it's why, at times when Trump has brought up the ability to, to get line item veto, people have said that would give the president too much power. So, um, we have a, a constitutional crisis in Louisiana in that our constitution is broken. Now, if you listen to John Bell Edwards, he's saying that Republicans that are, are doing everything they can to prevent him from getting a win, and there are some Republicans who are saying that as well. I personally don't care. I want them to get their job done. And part of getting their job done is addressing the fundamental problems that we run into every year. When we have a system that's based on consumption, which is, we have very high sales taxes and we have very low property taxes, and we give away the first $75,000 in value of your home, um, it's not well-balanced, it's not a well-balanced system, right? It's, it's, uh, much more on the consumer and not, not very high on the property owner. And, and I'm not saying we need to go establish all these new property taxes, but what I am saying is that we can look at states who've done it well, and we can emulate them. And the way that we start that process is by calling a constitutional convention, wiping it out, and writing it from the beginning with a little bit of common sense. So, I hope that these guys up there put their, put their heads together and do the hard work to get this done. It's a shame that we couldn't get this, that we're going into another session. It's, it's, it blows me away that this happens over and over and over again, yet we don't take this, a second back to go, "All right, guys, let's just fix the root of this and be done."
I think it was funny because, um, the first special session that we just got done-
What was that phrase you used about saner heads or, or really, you know, people coming together? If you wanna see what a constitutional convention would look like, because I remember the other one, and it wasn't pretty either, believe me. That's why, that's how we got into this mess.
The, um, the issue of how much it costs, all the reports before, like this one that just now passed called it $60,000 a year. I mean, $60,000 for the session, yeah, for the, for every day. Well, now, they say fifty. So, I wanna know what kind of catering was cut off? Are we doing Burger King for lunch now?
If you're asking the people that we voted into the legislation to figure out how a dollar works, look at what they're doing now. They obviously don't know.
All right, 232-1542. We're gonna, gotta take some of your phone calls. I'm here on a We Get It Wednesday. When we answer the phone, if you could just turn your radio down in the background and we'll, uh, get your question or comment in. All right, you're up. Go ahead, you're on We Get It Wednesday.
Yeah, a couple of things. I don't know why they call that the earned income tax credit. That's an unearned income tax. You get more taxes back than you pay in. And, but, but you're liberal there on the, on the, on the panel, all that, you know, sales tax at least is fair across the board. Redistribution is where you go out and hit the property owners and, anyway, I'm, I'm, I'm for cutting out a lot of these taxes and a lot of the stuff. All you're talking about is spending, you know, tops. Well, raise the, raise the, 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 the level at top so you don't have the people that go take courses that they shouldn't be taking, it should be out in job training somewhere. Uh, there's, there's a lot of problems, but, and it's, it's the same old liberal trash. Anyway, that's what I got to say.
Well, the reason it's called the earned income is because it is for working poor, the working poor, and frankly, the working poor don't pay taxes. So, they do, it is, it does become an unearned income tax credit if, in effect, effectively. It's a distinction without a difference.
I, I like to put out that, that, uh, it's, to hold one party responsible for what happened, um, in the legislation on Monday night is silly, right? So, we've got a Democrat governor, right, who wasn't there to vote, who can't vote, um, and we've got both the House and the Senate controlled by Republicans. They, there is some, there is, this is living evidence, right, that they're not all voting together along party lines, which I agree with, I'm glad they're doing that. Um, but I think that you're seeing, you know, the, the Tea Party mentality rear its ugly head, which is the no-to-everything type deal, right? So-
Not no-to-everything. It is holding the line on stupid spending. In, in many, many cases, it really is stupid spending, and they're, they're really taking a look at it, and they're listening to their constituents. They are representing their constituents who are paying the freight. I mean, this is the middle class, the shrinking middle class that can't afford to continue to pay, as John Kennedy said at the meeting last week, "The bailouts for the wealthy at the top and the give it handouts for the ones at the bottom," and that's what the earned income tax credit, even though it's for the working poor. Understand all that. Uh, there's a serious, there's a serious problem. Now, remember, the House, the reason the budget bills start in the House is because they're closer to the people. It starts there. They look at what, you know, and the, the House, this time, the House passed a budget that was relatively imbalanced. I mean, they had most of the major stuff covered. They did make some cuts to TOPPS and some other agencies, but they had most of it in balance. It was mostly funded with the one cent. The governor vetoed it, and even the, the Senate came, kinda came in with the House, and they came together, the, the, the governor vetoed it.
And to your point, I, let me just say this, to your point, there was a long time, I think that ev, eventually, the Congressional Black Caucus came around, but, um, that was a huge chunk of the Democrat vote that was not on the same page with Edwards.
That's exactly right. On that first budget bill, they, they voted for it.
So, I just, I need to clarify, I need to ask Carol something she said, though. You said against stupid spending, where they've, the current system right now cuts TOPPS, right? Are you saying that investing in our kids through, through college education is stupid spending?
Well, I think that it has gotten totally out of hand, and I don't think that TOPPS was intended to function the way it's functioning now, and the law of unintended consequence has definitely kicked in. If you're gonna weigh the needs of people who are medically, who are indigent, who need medical help, and are get, who are being hurt by the way the, the Medicaid is being, is being run right now because it's bankrupting us, it's taking all of the money out. However, however, if you had to make a choice between giving medical care to people who are indigent and a middle-class kid whose parents could afford to send him to college and who, and, and the middle class who has to pay the freight for this, for other kid, other people's kids to go to college when maybe their kids can't make the grade, whatever, there just doesn't seem to be, and it, you know, a really rational sense there. And by the way, if, I would say, track the increase in tuition-
I was gonna say that.
-after the TOPPS was passed.
The unintended consequences is-
You're taking it out of one pocket and putting it in the other. That's essentially what you're doing.
I, so I agree, we have a, we would definitely have a tuition problem, right? And I think that part of that is because we're starting to sell college as a commodity as opposed to a luxury item, right? Um, that being said, TOPPS was funded primarily through tobacco money, if I'm not mistaken. So, we, we developed a system to fund it, and then we raided it-
Just like the lottery funding education. Excuse me. It just never works out that way.
But, but again, we've raided it, and we've had to go back, with, just like we raided our coastal funds and everything else, and, and a lot of that demise started a decade ago, and it has gone downhill. Now, we're, we're really suffering the consequences, consequences, just like Kansas is going through it right now, right? You had this Grover Norquist policies that are, that are tossed out there, and they're never followed through. If you listen to some Republicans, they're never followed through to fruition the way they're supposed to be, but in reality, they're bad for society, right? So, we need to stop giving away-
That's a pretty flawed statement, I would say. They're not bad for society.
I think if you ask the people of, of Kansas and the people of Louisiana, that if, if we should give away money to corporations and, and, and then tax it, fill it on the backs of middle class, then they're gonna say no.
You're putting the power into the hands of politicians who are not known for exactly doing the right, the right thing. Uh, they, for instance, let me tell you, that, that article in The Advocate, trashing Lance Harris because he's a conservative, they went after him because he's a conservative. Now, he did a stupid thing, but that, that's neither here nor there. He didn't violate the ethics rule, but there's, they're going after him particularly because he was, he's the, he is the poster child right now for standing up to the governor, right? They don't talk about all the legislators who have nursing home interests.
It's a, that's one of the big powerful lobby. Hey, let's, uh, take some phone calls-
Because there are a lot of Democrats.
To wrap this up. All right. Okay.
Who vote with the governor to fund nursing homes way out of proportion to the way they should be.
All right, 1542.
Saying nothing against nursing homes and the care they provide.
We're gonna take a phone call to-
Even though they rank 49th.
To wrap up this segment. Uh, go ahead, you're on We Get It Wednesday. Go ahead with your comment.
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna make a few comments and then hang up. First off, I don't think we need TOPPS, period. I went to college without it. I'm 48, I'm still paying on student loans today, and will be till I'm 65. I don't wanna have to keep paying for other people's college tuition, too, when the majority of them, and I may not mean the majority, but how many of them get a college degree and then leave the state? So, I don't wanna pay for some other state's kid's future.
That is, uh-
So, I could care less about TOPPS.
Yeah.
So, I'm gonna let that out, y'all talking about it.
No, yeah. I think he makes a good point about people moving away.
I think there's, there's two points to be made there, right? I think either, uh, he's really smart and is only paying down the debt that's higher interest, or he needs to find a better job, so.
And that's what it kinda comes down to. People have-
And look, I, I agree. The reason that these kids leave the state is because we have the lowest requirement per capita for jobs with college educations. It's why, one of the reasons that Lafayette diversifying to a higher tech economy has been good, because we're bringing kids back who we've educated and putting them back into our system, paying our taxes, and paying back into TOPPS.
Well, that's funny because Lafayette job loss has topped the state. We have had TOPPS for how long?
They'd be significantly worse.
And it still has not produced the effect that it, they said it would produce.
They'd be significantly worse if it wasn't, if it wasn't for the tech industry.
Well, I probably agree with you. That's why I supported Fiber to the Home, because I think it has been good from a marketing standpoint, but let's keep an eye on all the dollars that we spend. Are we getting the return on investment? I don't have that reassurance with TOPPS.
One of the big things with the Taylor Family Foundation in the beginning, now, they also added some more comments a couple of years ago, that they came in and made some comments about, you know, it wasn't gonna be able to fund all of someone's tuition and that they didn't intend for it to be that way from the beginning. One of the things they did say, though, at the beginning of it, and one of the ways that they worked to pass the legislation for the TOPPS scholarship program was, they asked people, voters, to think of it as an investment in the state of Louisiana.
That's what they always say, Bernie.
And, yeah, but you know what? I actually, it, I would rather spend some money on paying, maybe not all of it, um, but for a C student, like, I'd rather spend my money there than like some program where we're not helping people.
Understood, but now, also remember, Mr. Taylor, he, he modeled it on that program in Harlem, and it was supposed to be for disadvantaged kids who could not afford to go to college.
Correct.
Right? And so, the state hijacked it. Governor Mike Foster took it over into the state, and what happened? It got expanded into a middle-class entitlement that, oh my God, it's gonna be the end of the world if you take it away.
You know, uh, I think the big conversation that we're gonna have to continue to have is about tuition, because it is, like, you know, you, you've cut funding, so tuition is going up, but then the state is paying more in TOPPS. So, we will have to follow that, of course, as we move forward.
Okay. Are you ready for your break, sir?
I'm very much ready.
Okay, I gotta do traffic.
There you go.
All right, double-checking what's happening in traffic. 90 eastbound in Broussard, we have a reported traffic crash. This is 90 eastbound in Broussard, between the area of Saint Nazaire and Celebrity Drive. So, that's 90 eastbound in Broussard, between the area of Saint Nazaire and Celebrity. Just make sure that you're buckling up and that you're keeping it safe out there today. Traffic brought to you by Wasabi, now open at the corner of Ambassador and Cali Saloon Road. All you can eat made to order from the menu with over 200 items, including sushi, sashimi, hibachi, teriyaki, and more. Wasabi at the corner of Ambassador and Cali Saloon Road behind O'Reilly.
All right, so, Supreme Court ruling this week in favor of a Colorado bakery who did not want to make, um, a cake to the specifications of a same-sex couple. He said he would sell them a cake that was made, was already there, but, um, I don't know the details of what the specifications were, but the Supreme Court sided with them. Stafford, thoughts?
When you get a craving for a pecan cake, and they don't have one there, and you insist on it, sometimes you give crazy reasons for not wanting to give, to make another one, right?
Wow.
Look, so, uh, I think everybody was hoping that the Supreme Court would, uh, give some overarching ruling on free speech, um, and protected classes and so on and so forth. Um, I've seen a lot of very confused, uh, people think that, uh, this was a, um, the Supreme Court standing up for the family and this, that, and the other, and blah, blah. The Supreme Court came back and said that the Colorado Commission, who brought the man to court, was obviously biased and was wrong. And that's why you saw the ruling being seven to two. If it was remotely gonna be about First Amendment issues, um, you would've seen a significantly closer ruling. So, it was, it was a narrow ruling in the sense that they felt, uh, one of the people who bought the, that the, uh, that brought the lawsuit against the bakers, against the baker, uh, was wrong. So, uh, I think the Supreme Court sided with the rule of law, I think they did their job this time. I think that, uh, that hopefully we'll get an opportunity to get some, this, this settled potentially one day in the court of law, but this just wasn't the case for it. So, uh, this got sent back to the lower courts, no, nothing was overturned, no rules were changed, uh, they just said that, that it needed to be addressed.
I did think it was interesting how the vote, uh, panned out. We've talked a lot the last couple of days about the word narrowly, because the, the Associated Press came out and said it was a pretty narrow decision based on this, and as soon as you thought, "That's not narrow, it's seven to two, five to four is narrow, that's not narrow." And then the reporter had to come out and say, "I didn't mean narrow vote, it's, the ruling is narrow because it seems to just apply to this case, it's no, doesn't set major precedent." But the way the vote current, turned out, where you had Kennedy writing the majority opinion, and, um, Roberts joined, Kagan on that side, um, Alito on that side, Gortas, Thomas, the only ones, Ginsburg wrote the dissent, and Sotomayor joined that. Um, so, do you think it has implications? I mean, it seems like it's wide open right now.
Well, look, the, for artistic expression, remember, he could sell a cake off, he, he was perfectly happy to sell them a regular cake, but when he added his artistic expression, that's when it turned it into a First Amendment case, and his right to, to be the artist, to express his art the way he wanted to, and he did not believe in this. But, but the Colorado Civil Rights Commission really set the tone, because when they, I mean, they said, they said some really awful, I mean, when Kennedy even cited those, those statements, because he said they disparaged him.
That's really out of line, yeah.
They called him despicable, they, and, and comparable comments made by those who sought to justify slavery on religious grounds. This is what the Colorado Civil Rights Commission said. And by the way, state law, at the same time, afforded other storekeepers latitude to decline creating. Uh, for instance, there were three bakers who declined to put anti-gay messages on their cakes, and they say, does he, they said, and Kennedy said, very rightly, "Does he not deserve the same protection that they had when they chose not to do the anti-gay?" So, so anyway, it, it is narrowly defined, there's no question about that, but it does give hope to people. For instance, can't we all just get along, right? Did the gays have to have that shop and that cake? Did they have to push this guy into firing six people and losing at least half of his business? Was it about that? Can we all say, "Okay, you have rights as gay people"? We agree, I agree with that. You have rights under our constitution, you are protected. Your rights to get married, if you choose, are protected under the constitutions, all the, the, because we are a constitutional republic, we, we respect and protect the rights of the minorities, individual rights, exactly. How about the baker? Does he not have some individual rights as well? Can we all just figure out some kind of way to kind, find that compromise that does not drag every difference of opinion into court?
Yeah. Um, in Kagan's opinion, she wrote, "States can distinguish between bakers who reviews, refuse offensive requests, and those who deny service based on identity, but only if the state's decision are not infected by religious or hostility, or bo, religious hostility or bias." So, that tells me that-
Well, that's a neat, that's a neat tricky little distinction there. Come on.
And the thing is, too, whenever you say-
Threading the needle.
Well, if, if, if I walk in there, and I'm not a part of a same-sex couple, but I ask for something that, we don't do that, sir. If I want, if I want something offensive put on a cake, you know, if I want F-U on a cookie cake.
Exactly.
They can say, I mean, they can say no.
Oh, trust me, there, there was a baker, there was a baker in this town many years ago who put lots of offensive things on a cake.
Yeah.
It's kinda like the Bakery Underground.
Great American Cookie Company has no standards. You can do whatever you want with, they're magicians with frosting.
It kinda-
Look, look, listen.
Okay, Stafford, don't give too much away.
Here's the deal, I, the, the, uh, I think Kennedy said it best, um, that the courts have yet to find opportunity to elaborate on, um, on this part of the First Amendment, and that the Colorado, Colorado Commission was wrong. This isn't an answer either way. This isn't-
It's this specific one.
It's just this answer to this situation.
And really, only because they barked up that tree.
Right.
I don't even feel like it's something that if it wasn't brought-
I'm surprised they took the case anyway.
Yeah.
I, I, you know, I think that they had to take the case just so that they can make the clarification that this specific instance was an issue.
Well, that, well, not quite, because the court turns down most cases, there are very few cases that make it to the Supreme Court, but when you're talking about a First Amendment and religious rights, that's a, that's a biggie.
But you also have to think about this. When they decide to take on a case, there is still research to be done, so maybe they took it because they thought, "Maybe we'll find something in here that could set a precedent." Ended up not, but, you know.
Well, it did in a way. I mean, it did in a way for other narrowly, uh, things, but I mean, this man was really harmed. This man was harmed by this.
What do you think happens now?
I heard they got married.
I meant about the business owner.
Yeah.
He, he'll be fine.
Well, I guess he can, I guess he can go back to doing any kind of specialty wedding cake. He had to stop doing all wedding cakes, and that was his specialty because he was such a talented artist.
That's what I'm saying, though. Do you think he would try to file a suit against this couple?
For damages?
No, I, I think the man is just happy to be able to-
Or he's just like, "Ready, it's over."
Run his business the way he wants to without harming anybody.
I don't think he's buying any Roy G. Biv color schemes for, uh, his, uh-
No more rainbow cakes.
I don't think he's doing the rainbow cakes. I think he's probably fine.
All right, 7:43.
Unless it has a unicorn with it.
Well-
For the kids.
To each his, to each his own, Carol. Well, and what do you say? I know some 30-year-olds who would love a unicorn cake. Anyway, 7:43.
Am I looking at him?
We're back after this. No, you're not looking at him. No, no, no.
You're 30?
90 eastbound between Celebrity Drive and the area of Saint Nazaire, 90 eastbound between 90 eastbound between Celebrity and St. Nazaire, a little fender bender there in Broussard. Make sure you're buckling up and keeping it safe out there. Our traffic update brought to you by the wash. Get your car cleaned up in just minutes. It'll be sparkling like brand new, the wash. 1212 Ambassador Cafrey, right next to Service Cadillac.
All right, so I was telling Bernie a little bit earlier that from what I'm seeing from people who I, who work in in news, national news, whether it's from my, some of my friends at Fox, some of my friends at CNN. I have, I have no friends at MSNBC. Not that I'm not friends with them. I just don't have any, I don't know, I don't have any insight.
Name dropping again, eh?
You just drew the line in the sand.
Well, I just drew it.
We get it. You have friends in media.
On my, anyway, I'm getting to something. All I'm saying is that I told Bernie, a lot of the people who I knew to cover spot news, who have since the 20, really since 2015, since the election was revving up, have been 100% focused on politics, are now doing other stories, like are now kind of diversifying. I think the interest might be tailing off a little bit. Not going to say it's going to end, but I mean, how many, how many of these Trump stories can you have where if you believe a certain way, you're going to say, no surprise?
Right.
If you love Trump, you're going to say, media's out to get him. Well, so then, so, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't really match up. One of the stories that we had was the Eagles story, which yesterday, throughout the door, continued to change. It seemed in the morning that it was about the National Anthem. Then it seemed that the Eagles said they RSVP'd. Then Sarah Sanders said they had tried to change when they were going, and then Trump wasn't going to be there. So then he was kind of offended, apparently, and that's when he changed it to this America thing. I think people, that was in one day. That's, that's, that's changes in position that used to take two weeks, or a week at least. So Carol, what do you make of the whole Eagles thing? And also, like, are we just going to stop covering every little thing? Because it just keeps changing.
I think I'm going to do a best of Sarah Sanders.
Do a best of.
I, I just, she is so, she is so funny.
Sometimes she really is like, man, in one sentence, and like, she just goes, okay, I just went boop, 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 like a shooting gallery, and boop, 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 and all of them are down, you know?
The woman yesterday, I mean, this is not actually related, but it kind of is, when she was going on and on about getting out of the Iran deal. So former President Obama says this, and Hillary said this, and this one said that, and John Kerry said this. And it goes on and on, and she finally says, I don't think we're going to take any, any advice from people who totally failed on foreign policy. Boom, done.
And then like, and the whole thing got quiet.
And the whole thing got quiet. But anyway, on this thing, yeah, it went back and forth, and it seemed, you know, their PR person at the Eagles knew very well that Trump was not going to be there next week. I mean, why, you know, then you come back and you say only a few people are going to be there? I think he did get offended. Maybe he overreacted, you know, but, you know, like, like Laura Ingraham said last night, I think, you know, those Eagle fans? They probably, the Eagle fans might have had something to do with it, too. But anyway, because Eagle fans are known to be.
Yes. It was just interesting, though, because the, whenever the first thing.
I'm from that area. I know how tough it can be. I love my Eagles, but oh, my goodness.
When it came out about even relating this at all to the National Anthem thing, people immediately pointed out that they didn't kneel. I mean, there was one guy, apparently, he knelt during a preseason game.
That's why I think.
He was praying.
I think he, he kind of knee-jerked.
There was someone who protested in a preseason game. He was traded, not for that reason, but in the regular season.
There are two things going on here. I think the president is sensitive about this issue, you know?
And the NFL as a whole.
No, I'm talking about that. That's what I'm talking about. He's very sensitive about that issue. And also, he, he can use it as a wedge issue for the midterms. They're all using wedge issues for the midterms. Come on.
A wedge issue. I like that.
A wedgie issue. It's a wedgie issue.
That is annoying.
So you got to remember, Fox News ran a story showing a bunch of Philadelphia Eagles players kneeling, saying that they were kneeling during the anthem, right? And then they had to retract it the next day and say, we were mistaken, right? The question was, was Trump watching Fox News when they took the retraction, right?
We do know that he watches.
So this, the whole thing was, was absolutely, it's, it's just par for the course with this president, right? Some players said they weren't going to come. And look, think about some of the players who were there. One of the players, their tight end, donated every bit of his paycheck this year to, I want to say it was middle school education? Was it, was it wealthier son on those lines? They've had some honorable people on their team. Malcolm Jenkins is a real leader, former Saint.
Yeah, despite their fans.
Despite their fans.
Yeah.
I'm not talking about the team.
And so he, he, he holds this day, right? And he goes, we're just going to have a celebration day. Forgets the words to God Bless America. Was that what they were singing? Was it God Bless America?
It was one of those.
It was one of those.
Well, you forgot.
I don't know the words. I'm also not, I'm also not holding America Appreciation Days in place of Philadelphia Eagle Appreciation.
The only thing I wanted to say about that, about the Fox person and the thing, y'all would be amazed at how many times people in media, whether you think they're on one side or another, mess up and don't apologize and don't correct their mistakes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That really should peeve everybody.
So let me finish my train of thought on this. The other beautiful thing was that during Sarah Sanders' press conference, she goes, she goes, we're, we're happy that the Supreme Court affirmed the baker's First Amendment rights. And then when they pointed out that the kneeling in protest was about police violence towards, for, towards young black men, she had to say, the president is very clear on where he stands on this. So what she was basically saying was, it's a First Amendment right issue for somebody to deny a cake to a homosexual couple, but it's not a First Amendment issue for NFL athletes. And look, to kneel in protest. That being said, I think the NFL botched this one, right? The NFL screwed up. They didn't start coming out in, in standing for the National Anthem until a couple of years ago. And it's just around the same time that they started selling advertising to all the recruiting for the military. Military's got a massive recruiting problem right now. There's a, the average young male coming out of high school cannot make it in the military.
Yeah, but that's actually been over the last 40 years.
Yeah, but it's gotten significantly worse.
It is significantly worse because they can't find people that don't do drugs.
They, and not just that, but, but the the obesity rates to the roof.
People can't, they can't pass the physicals.
Right.
You're right. It's sad.
And so we've done this heavy marketing.
Let's legalize marijuana. Hey, that'll solve it.
Well.
We, okay.
Dude, they're going to get the munchies.
That's a whole different deal.
That might exacerbate the problem, Carol.
That's what I'm saying. That's exactly what I'm saying. The government does stupid stuff. Okay, we can't recoup people because they have a drug problem.
Smoking is going to kill you, but let's all smoke some pot.
So, so the president may not be saying, congrats to the Philadelphia Eagles, but congrats to the Philadelphia Eagles.
So I want to say this. You know, the TSA often gets a bad rap for what they do. And this is totally on a different topic, but I have been meaning to tell you this, Bernie. And so I'll tell it to all of our friends here. So I go pick up my daughter and my mother-in-law from the airport a couple of days ago. I'm standing there. And you know, I'm, if you're going to get me mushy, it's going to be a soldier reunion with this family. It makes me want to cry every time. It's super touching. Meanwhile, I get it from my mom, who is, when she sits in an airport and she sees loved ones, like hugging each other after a trip, she's bawling because it's just so touching.
It's sweet.
All right, so I'm standing there. I don't know who the agent was. I don't know who the people are. And I would love to know who the agent was, just because it was the most touching thing. I'm standing there. And there's a group of people, and they're kind of making small talk, and they're kind of joking. It's clearly a mom and her two daughters, and they're joking, and they're joking, oh, I'm going to be in first class. I'm getting whatever. And they're just kind of joking. As soon as it became time for one of the daughters to go up to give her driver's license and her boarding pass, well, then they all start crying. So I'm standing there like, I've been up for a long time. Don't get me crying. Like, I'm on the verge. I could possibly cry, too. And so, so the TSA woman doesn't know anything. The one, the girl is not wearing anything that would. No, she's wearing clothes, Stafford. But she's not wearing anything that would, you would determine where she was going.
Right. Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
And she says, it's okay. I made it through basic, too. And it hit me that the TSA agent knew from where her boarding pass said she was going and how emotional she was, that she was going to basic train. I mean, it gives me chills right now. And the girl can't bring herself, you know, say anything because her kids are behind. And she goes, you're going to make it through, and you're going to come home, right? And the girl said, yeah, you know, I'm going to come home. And she goes, I made it through it. Just make sure you listen. Don't follow anyone. Be your own person. All while checking her ID on her boarding pass. And so I'm sitting there like a big pile of mush, like.
It was, it was, it was the woman?
It was a woman. And she's shorter.
I think she listens to KPL.
Well, you know what? I, I thought one of the things, she, one time I was, I was flying her out.
If it's the one I talk to.
She asked Sarah, who's keeping the kids? And Sarah, and Sarah got a little bit freaked out, like, who knows?
What's your jury say, combination?
Exactly.
Do you have big dogs?
So then I realized it was because I had gone through first, and Sarah was behind me, you know? So anyway, thank you to people who just, you know, everyday kindness and good deeds.
Yeah.
The fact that this, this TSA, you know, agent is looking and just said, you're going to make it through. I made it through. You're going to make it through. And I mean, everyone was just crying all around. I was like, you know what?
Imagine having to deal with that many people every single day.
Oh, yeah, and any of them who are already pissed because they're in the airport.
They're already irritated, you know?
That's Warren. Warren works at the airport. That explains everything.
They've been jacked around at the airport.
At the end.
All right, guys.
Man.
They've had to deal with the airlines.
Yeah.
Who is this old man telling me my credit card is being rejected right now? My name's Warren.
Guys, thanks for your time. As always, we get it Wednesday each and every week.
I hope he's not listening. That old man. Come on.
You, you're an ageist, my friend.
Oh, he is.
He is. I got news for you. If you're lucky, you're going to get old, too. And when y'all and then my other little friends start complaining, oh, this hurts, oh, that hurts, I'm going to be in the back in my wheelchair with all, none of my teeth, none of my teeth like.
The decision that you made to, to have the operation that you had today, it was very brave, especially in this community. I, I hope everything's safe. I'm surprised you had to go to a foreign country to get it done, but apparently that operation is illegal here. So you're going to be just fine, and I accept you.
Now, where can we get him a cake?
It's going to be so.
All right, it's 7:57.
Have a good week.
Thanks, guys. Y'all have a great weekend, too.
Yes.
Summertime, it's hot.
My always.
Touch your grass.
I like the heat.
7:57. News is next on News Talk 96.5 KPL.